A quorum.
Right, so with the permission of the commission, here's how I'd like to do this. We've got two items on the work session agenda. The first is Park Street Church. What I'd like us to do is get an introduction from NDS, then hear from the applicant, and then get public feedback. And once we've got public feedback, then we'll engage the applicant and staff. We'll begin with, you know, the left to right questions. And then we'll begin, we'll finish with left to right input and guidance for the applicant. And then we'll repeat that for the MACA site. Is everyone comfortable with that? If you are just not. Oh, hey Rory, Rory showed up. So Ms. Creasy, is Ms. Dow going to be joining at any point?
Um, I, I know Ms. Robertson has spoken with her, and so I anticipate she will join us at some point in time here. I know that the first, before we jump into the items for specifically, Mr. Habab will have a statement that he'll need to read. And we'll kind of go from there.
So set my expectations, will Mr. Bob be able to participate or will he have to recuse himself?
He will not be able to participate this evening.
Okay.
Or, or on these two specific items.
Got it. So Mr. Bob, would you like to walk us through the reasons you are not able to participate?
Sure, I can read the official statement and then I can talk about it, I guess. So I have a statement to make regarding my participation in the planning commission's consideration of the MACA site PUD and Park Street Christian Church PUD application. I'm employed by BRW Architects and as a result of the annual salary that I receive from BRW Architects, I'm required to disqualify myself from participating in the transactions. If anyone would like to review the more detailed written disclosure statement that I have filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission Council, that statement is available upon request. So essentially I'm involved, you know, in the office with these projects on the periphery of them. So it's probably best that I'm not involved in this process right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I think we're ready to move into the introduction. Ms. Creasy, is someone from NDS going to introduce this?
Sure, we're, this is the first opportunity you all have had, most of you to meet Danan, but his first opportunity to present to the commission. So I want to introduce Danan O'Connell, who just joined our team a couple of months ago. He's had experience working in Pecoson prior to working with us at the city. And he's a regional native of the area here. So we're excited that he had the opportunity to come back and be part of our team. So I'm going to turn it over to Danan.
Welcome Dan, and we're thrilled to have you on board.
Thank you very much. It's good to meet all of you. Hopefully someday I'll get to see you all in person. So tonight, the first application you'll be considering for your work session is from the Piedmont Housing Alliance in partnership with BRW Architects, Timmins Group, and the Park Street Christian Church. They are requesting a rezoning for property located at 1200 Park Street, which is parcel ID 47-H212. It's about 7.43 acres and is currently zoned for R1 residential. They are proposing to rezone this property to PUD planned unit development to accommodate a plan for two new buildings containing 50 apartments for age restricted senior housing. And this is behind the existing use, which is currently developed with a church, Park Street Christian Church, and some childcare use, which I believe is permitted via NSUP. But with that, I guess I will turn it over to the applicants to explain their proposal in full.
I think I will, I will start out. My name is Bruce Wardell. I'm a principal with BRW Architects. And I think I will, I probably handle this more like a, like an emcee in which I'm going to introduce other, other members of the team as, as their area of focus arises. But tonight we have with us here representatives from Piedmont Housing Alliance, Sunshine Mason, Andy Miller, Mandy Bervidge. We have members of the representatives from the Timmins Group, where there are civil engineers, Jonathan Showalter, and let's see, I think we have.
Also Scott Dunn.
Yeah, that's right. I was looking for his name, yeah. And we, we provided you with a packet of information. I think we submitted on August 3rd. And the, the material that we have that we're presenting to you tonight has some slight differences from that that are actually responses to a series of community meetings. The, let's see, Danan, are you controlling the slideshow?
No, Ms. Parks from our communications office will be addressing that for us. So as you all need to advance slides, just note that as your presentation and she'll take care of that for you.
Okay. You know, let's, let's get the slideshow up so that we have it available and then we'll.
It should be the Park Street Church slideshow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you guys see that okay?
Yes, you can. Thank you. Let's go to the, to the next slide. This project is a, is a, is a collaboration between the Piedmont Housing Alliance, who's the nonprofit developer, our architectural firm, Timmins Group. And the, the central partner of this, of this project is actually the congregation, the Park Street Christian Church, who a couple of years ago really began to focus on their commitment to contributing to the, the, on the need for affordable housing in our community. And began to understand the resource that they have with the land that they own surrounding their property. And that was actually the genesis of this project, was their desire to contribute in some significant way to specifically senior affordable housing. Let's go on to the next slide. We have, we have had, over the last couple of months, we've had a number of meetings. One was that we had, the first meeting we had was really an informal invitation to the community surrounding Park Street Christian to introduce them to the project, which will provide 50 affordable housing units on the property that Park Street Christian owns. Following that meeting, we followed that up with the, with the required entitlement community meeting at, at Charlottesville High School in the library on August 10th. And here we find ourselves at the planning commission work session. What you will see tonight has some feedback and some response to the information and the questions and the issues that were brought up during the both community meetings. And what is driving the schedule for this is a, is a target that you'll see down in this schedule from March of 2022, which is a deadline for the low income housing tax credit application. That happens once a year. It's a competitive application. And, and so we have to kind of reverse engineer our schedule to be able to meet that, that deadline. And that deadline will require a rezoning prior to our submitting the, the application. Let's go on to the next. This is an overview of the site. You can see it, it goes along Park Street as Park Street goes down and, and parallels the Parkway, but is the, actually is the old major access into downtown. And it is on the edge of the Lachlan, the Lachlan Hills neighborhood, right on the, on the boundary of that and Park Street. Let's go on to the next slide. This is a, this is a diagram of the, of the overall site where you can see the main church sanctuary. There is also an operating preschool that is adjacent to the sanctuary with parking just along Cutler Lane. And then there's a heavily wooded section of this, of the site that goes both west down to Park Street and then north, north heavily wooded and primarily critical slopes to the north that have walking trails that actually connect to the, to the Rivanna Trail. And that's, that's a walking trail that is already used and, and, and connects to the trail down that topography. Let's go, and then you can also see the, the Park Street down there. Some of the characteristics of the site are that, that there is a, there's a parking lot that right off of Cutler Lane that has been there since the buildings were built in the 1960s. And then the, the rear yards of the, of the, of the church and the preschool are actually outdoor playing, are outdoor education areas and play areas that you can see in the photograph number two. And then down below that is this heavily, heavily wooded slope that goes down to Park Street as Park Street goes around to the north, around that, that turn that leads down as it, as it, as it heads north into and becomes Rye Road. Cutler Lane is there on the, on the, on the lower right hand side. And you can see the beginning of, of the neighborhood and the texture of the neighborhood that is, is along Cutler Lane and then continues to the east and, and north of this site. Let's go on to the next. This is really the zone, the zoning map. It's currently, the site is currently R1. It is adjacent to an R2 site to the west. And then a good amount of open park space that surrounds that area. In the current proposed land use map, you can see that the density of this area has been upgraded on the, on the proposed land use map. And it's that, that kind of strategic upgrading of the density of the site that has, that we've, we've looked at as, as we've thought about developing the, the affordable housing, the 50 affordable housing, housing units on this site. Let's go on to the next. This is the, some photographic images of the road as it passes Cutler Lane. And one of the things that we are requesting in a site waiver is for the sidewalk along this road. And what you can see, you can see the topography that comes down to the very edge of the pavement in this area. And that, that's part of the critical slopes that go up towards the, towards the main more level part of the property that, that is where we are proposing to do our development. But you can see why the physical conditions that, that, that begin to affect the, the ability to, to, in any kind of reasonable way to begin to introduce a sidewalk on this side of the road. There is a sidewalk on the opposite, on the west side of Park Street along this, this area as well. Let's go on to the next. This is a depiction of our, of our proposal. It is two buildings that will compose 50 housing units. The tan area are the critical slopes. The green lines are, the solid green lines are proposed connections to the Rivanna Trail. And you can see that for those 50, 50 units, we are providing 54 parking spaces. We place the buildings on the opposite side of the site from the neighborhood. There is a significant slope, although it's not a critical slope, all down this side of the property. And we'll show you on a later slide that the, that these buildings are, are, will be both screened from Park Street and to a, to a large extent screened from the neighborhood. Let's go on to the next slide. So you can see that in building one, there are 27 proposed units. And in building two, there are 23 proposed units. And one of the, one of the other concepts that is fundamental to the church's interest in, in providing affordable housing is also to provide a community, intergenerational community with the preschool, with the church and the church, the fellowship of the church and the facilities. They, they imagine developing a series of relationships with the folks that live in these, these units where both the children from the preschool and the residents of the, of the units, should they, should they choose to, can, can begin to have, build relationships with each other and really make this an intergenerational community that is fostered and shepherded by the congregation of the, of the, of the church. Let's go on to the next one. This is a basic conceptual section. The buildings are three story buildings, but you can see that they are set downhill from the, from the existing building. Cutler Lane is on the right. Park Street is on the left and the proposed parking is slid in between the church facilities and the proposed building locations. Let's go on to the next. This is just a conceptual idea of the two buildings. Piedmont Housing Alliance puts solar panels on all of their buildings. Our, the buildings are built to passive house standards. And so these two buildings will, will certainly be built to a quality that is well above what you would normally expect for normal affordable housing. You can see here how the, how the parking is tucked between the church facilities and the new housing. And then you can also see how the, the existing tree coverage between the buildings and Park Street will continue to provide the, the screening from Park Street along this site. Let's go on next. This is a very quick conceptual sketch of the, of the, the new buildings from the entrance to the parking area. You can see the slope up the hill to the preschool on the right. You can see the, the, the two buildings related to each other on the left. And you can see how the, the site continues to slope down to the left where we can get some lower level units on the, on a, on one level below. All of these units are affordable. All of them would be accessible with elevators in each of the buildings. Let's go on. Um, you know, the precedent that we actually thought about on this project, and this is really Kurt's observation, is the development that's happened at McGuffey Hill, where you have a fairly intense development of apartment buildings on the side of a hill, kind of overlooking the intersection of High Street and, and the McIntyre. And you can see how the, the tree coverage actually provides a pretty significant visual buffer between the housing on the side of the, side of the slope and the public sphere. Let's go on to the next one. These are just some, some visual images of this, of the site. This is the view of the church building from Cutler Lane. And then there is actually a model of the, of the volume of the proposed building beyond that. You can see that gray volume where the actual roof of the, of the, of the proposed building is below the roof of the, both the preschool and the church. Let's go on. This is a view from Cutler Lane looking up towards the church, right at where we were proposing to bring the, the drive in. And again, this is the volume that you would see from the Cutler Lane and the, and the neighborhood side of the property. Let's go on. Again, the sidewalk, walking up Cutler Lane on the, on the west side of Cutler Lane. Now you can see the two church buildings and you can see the proposed structures to the left. Let's go on to the next. And then from Park Street, this is the, on the left is actually the summer view of the, of buildings. The, the one on the right is where those buildings actually are up the hill from the, from Park Street, behind the, the vegetation. Let's go on to the next. Let's see, do we want to talk about the traffic study now? Do we need to bring Scott up to, as a, as a presenter to be able to talk?
Yes, Scott's on here.
Yep, I'm available if you can hear me.
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect. Yeah, just a quick overview. At the request of the city, a traffic impact study was required as part of this PUD process. Just as a heads up, the project, the traffic study itself, look at this site and the MACA site as one project. So both developments are included as one traffic study. Specific to this site, we look primarily at Cutler Lane and North Avenue intersections. The North Avenue intersection is signalized, the Cutler Lane is not. Based on the analysis we've done, the Park Street through movements operated at a level of service A during both the AM and PM peaks. At the signalized intersection of North Avenue, with the development in place, we see a level of service A in the morning and a level of service B in the afternoon on North Avenue. And at Cutler Lane, we see a level of service C in the morning and a level of service D in the afternoon. So based on the traffic volumes, we were looking at the proposed apartments only generate about 350 trips per day and 25 trips in the morning and 35 in the afternoon. This amount of traffic doesn't warrant any geometric improvements at either location. But with that being said, there have been some concerns expressed regarding traffic impacts to the adjacent neighborhoods, which I can turn over to John and let him sort of cover those aspects of the project.
Yeah, so I believe if we go to the next slide here, it'll have a little more information. So basically, as Bruce was mentioning, we had two community meetings so far. The initial one that wasn't required, but here's some initial thoughts. And then also the one at CHS. And some themes we heard in those meetings were concerns about increased traffic in the neighborhood. And whenever there's development, there's always concerns about how's it going to impact the traffic. So one of their concerns here currently is Wilder Drive is fairly narrow. And just having people leaving this development using Wilder Drive or increasing traffic on Wilder Drive. So we looked at decreasing traffic or keeping it from increasing here anywhere we can. So one option we're looking at is a right turnout only from this site on the Cutler Lane. So that would mean any traffic accident, you need to do a right turnout and go down Cutler to Park Street. Another item that the neighbors mentioned was an existing issue was the site distance looking right on the Park Street. That's looking north on the Park Street. And we've been looking at that, doing some initial site distance profiles. And it appears that we can fix that, since this is the church's property, through clear and brush and really improve the site distance at intersection. So those are two of the, the initial concerns that we can address there on a traffic level when we're looking to do with this project.
So what you're seeing here are, in fact, the issues that, the, the top issues that were expressed by the community in the first two community meetings. And I think, so you can see that the traffic and interaction at, at Park Street and Cutler Lane was a concern, the cut through traffic at Wilder, which Jonathan just talked about. And then there were issues about the, the loss of trees and the scale of the project. And I think if we go to the next slide. Yeah, maybe, I think this is where Kurt, if you want to jump in here and maybe set up the, the conversation that we are, we're hoping to have with the commissioners tonight. And we can, we can move back and forth between these slides, depending on how you want to go through it, Kurt.
Yeah, well, actually, I'm going to turn it back over to Chair Mitchell. But I think before we were done with our presentation, we were asked to kind of call out specifically any differences between the package you received from August 3rd and what was kind of uploaded to you recently. And I'm happy to report that generally the, the content is the same. There's, there were no changes in the update that we just sent over. So what we're looking at tonight, the, the changes, I'll read them out really quickly so we can just have them on the record. But we shifted the parking areas to avoid some critical slopes and to be able to add a dumpster at the end. We changed the driveway pattern to avoid the couple of trees that Bruce had mentioned that the neighbors were concerned about losing kind of big specimen trees in the, in the big amenity green space on Cutler. We, we added a few more trees in our parking area. We're trying to make that more like a landscape parking area instead of a typical parking zone. We, in this package tonight, we've included hand sketched perspectives. And we did not include the matrix and comp plan comments, but they're the same. We haven't changed any of that content. And then the last thing that we did was that there, I think the August 3rd presentation had a dashed line running beside the parking lot that kind of inferred some kind of easement that would allow the trail to move through in front of the buildings. But I think in talking to Ravanna Trail Foundation, they'd prefer that that run around behind the buildings, kind of between our buildings and Park Street. So we've, we've started to talk more about those formal connections to the Ravanna Trail running through the woods proper and not by the parking lot. So those are the changes. And at this point, we'll look to Chair Mitchell to take us through the next piece of the meeting.
If you, if you toss in the ball back to me, just a couple of comments. Just so these guys can begin thinking about it. Brendan, looking to hear your comments when we get to you. Because I'm certain the commissioner will ask about it, about the traffic impact. And Mr. Laindra, looking to hear from you when we get to you about the impact of the loss of trees. But I think the next step in the process, Ms. Creasy, is to open up to public comment. Is that accurate?
That is correct. And we're not going to have our regular timer on the screen this evening, but I've got a timer that has a audible prompt. So you'll know when the three minutes is up.
So Ms. Parks, what we're asking you to do is like, see who's in the lobby raising their hand, who would like, who would like to speak. Whoever would like to speak, you've got three minutes to speak. And then we need to see to the next person. Ms. Parks?
No problem. If you guys would like to make public comment at this time, go ahead and hit the raise hand icon. Or if you are calling in by phone, you can do star nine and I will bring you in. So first up we have is Vicky Bravo.
Welcome, Vicky. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Vicky Bravo. I'm with Congregation Beth Israel and I'm part of IMPACT, our interfaith group of 27 congregations committed to solving community problems. I'm here tonight to voice my and IMPACT's support for the Park Street Christian Church proposal. No matter where we're from or where we live, having a safe, stable place to come home to is the foundation for our wellbeing and for our mental health. We in every city and county in America are in a housing crisis. Over 4,000 families in our community pay more than half their income towards housing and over a thousands of those are senior households. This means that we have senior citizens who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. We have seniors who cut back on their medication because they can't afford to buy enough to take it properly. We have seniors who are isolated because they can't afford to live near their churches, community centers, and other sources of companionship. Many of these seniors who struggle with housing have lived in this community most of their lives. Shouldn't senior members of our community have safety and security in their golden years? Shouldn't they be able to pay their rent and have enough money left for food, medicine, and other necessities? Like air to breathe and food to eat, safe shelter is a basic human need that everyone deserves. We have an opportunity here. Together, we can create a place where seniors can live well, stay involved, and continue contributing to our community. It will improve their lives and improve our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vicky. Ms. Parks, is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Oh, I was muted. At this time, I don't see anyone else raising their hand. Oops, someone, a couple popped up. So first we have Philip.
And Philip just muted. Philip, you need to unmute if you'd like to chat with us.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're back. Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm an adjacent property owner. I've lived in the area for seven years. Uh, what nobody has said a word about is the community you're putting this thing into. This is a stable, fully-integrated, middle-class community, and it's the sort of community where people are investing in their homes. It's the sort of community that zoning is meant to protect. It's the sort of community that most cities would be proud to have. Just to give you a single example, we're in the middle of a major remodeling project. We saved seven years to be able to afford this project. This project was revealed to the neighborhood four weeks ago. Now, to give you a contrast, look at the Southwood project. According to Habitat for Humanity, they spent three thousand hours talking to the neighbors on that project. Three thousand hours. Park Street Christian hasn't even spent three, okay? Now, this is bad timing. This area is changing. Park Street has three hundred and twenty residences that are gonna go in at Rial and uh, and John Warner Parkway. Downtown, we have a quarter of a million square feet of office space that's opening up. And there's only three quarters into that, John Warner, Park Street, and and Locust, and Locust you did. What's gonna be the impact? What's the zoning actually going to look like? We've got lots of proposals. Those proposals are really controversial. What's it gonna look like? Um, what is, uh, we're not just looking at fifty units here. We've got the MACA project. We're looking at a hundred and thirty units into what is an owner-occupied neighborhood. That's a radical change, and we don't need to do it now, okay? These low-income housing credits are gonna be around. If they're not used for this, they're gonna be used for someplace in Hampton Roads or whatever. There's no hurry on doing this. This project, this church has been sitting there for sixty years as a good neighbor. They've been sixty years with those trees growing here. Why do we have to do this with four weeks' notice? Again, the purpose of zoning is to protect property owners, allow them to make their investments, avoid situations like Baltimore and Detroit where you gotta Halloween out. Talk to the neighbors. If Habitat can spend three thousand hours talking to the neighbors, Park Street Christian can spend three hundred. They haven't done it. They've kept this thing secret. Why? Um, that's enough.
And Philip, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, Ms. Parks, any more?
If anyone else would like to make public comment, now's your time to again hit that raise hand icon. If not, we'll continue moving on with our meeting. Couple more hands just got raised. First up is Cecilia.
Welcome, Cecilia. Three minutes.
Oh, looks like you clicked on Constance. Constance, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, welcome, Cassius. Welcome. Three minutes, please.
Hi, I didn't write this question down. It's just sort of random. I was involved in the MACA proposal a couple of years ago, and this one at Park Street Church sort of sounds like that. And my concern is about uh, the neighborhood, as the gentleman just talked about. You need to talk to the neighbors and work with them. Don't surprise them like that project did to us a few years ago. And also, the affordability aspect. I am definitely for affordable housing. But the numbers I'm seeing look sort of like the project uh, aforementioned from MACA, I mean, a few years ago, where they kept telling us a retired school teacher could live there. Well, my sister is a retired school teacher. She couldn't have afforded to live there with those numbers which look about the same. So who is the target really for this affordable housing? So that's my question.
Thank you very much. Ms. Parks?
All right, next is Cecilia.
Welcome, Miss Mills. Yeah, we can. You've got three minutes, please.
Hi, I also live in the Wildwood neighborhood. Ironically, this is called Wildwood. And I just want to point out, this is actually heavily wooded section of town that is left. And my concern uh, is for the trees. Now, I'm old enough that I didn't read the Lorax, but uh, many people I know did. And I just want to hearken back to speak for the trees because they can't. This is an unspoiled wilderness that we treasure. Uh, and it actually is an affordable neighborhood. My neighbor, who is a senior, and several of the people on Wilder Drive are seniors, bought her house for about seventy thousand, and the market has increased that. And I sometimes feel like the homeowners are being... Can you hear me? Um, oh, sorry, sorry. I gotta find that timer.
That, that's not the official timer.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was trying to make sure I didn't run over. Okay, so.
Good for you. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. My eighty-six-year-old neighbor didn't believe the traffic number, so she sat at the corner of Cutler and North on Monday from four forty-five to five thirty and counted seven hundred and fifty cars. So I think that's a better way to judge what level of service C and D are, because that really doesn't mean anything to people. Um, that included cars turning to or from north in Cutler as well as Park. And since the preschool traffic had already gone at that point, that wasn't part of her count. So I just wanted to emphasize that the um, this plan feels a little pushy in a time of crisis. We are also having a climate crisis. So if you put the parking lot in and those, that housing, I would just like it to be smaller. And I know this developer says it can't be smaller, but it could be smaller and not cause runoff down to the stream, because Meadow Creek Stream is at the bottom of this, and the trees are what are keeping the runoff from wrecking the rest of that critical slope. So I do have concern about that, and the trees have been marked this week. So I don't know what that is, but there are a lot of white ribbons around those trees, um, which seem sort of questionable, like what? Were they to be protected or were they to be cut down? Lastly, this is not really like McGuffey and McIntyre in that the topography is not in the middle of the city. This is a neighborhood with no commercial services around it, and it's um, McGuffey is tucked up next to downtown. This is not, this is, the mathing and scale is not in keeping with what it currently exists there. It could just be a um, you know, landslide into further high-end development. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Um, Ms. Parks, do you want?
Um, anyone else who likes to make public comment at this time, go ahead and hit the raise hand icon or star nine on your telephone. I don't need to.
With that, I will, we'll close the public comment section and um, turn over the commissions. So why don't we do questions for the applicant and staff left to right, and then go left or right again to provide input? So why don't we begin with Ms. Russell?
Um, yeah, I would be interested in knowing more about the the residents' um, concern about the four weeks' notice, and um, can you tell me a little more about that?
I think that's a question for the applicant.
Yeah, I think um, the, if if we go to the slide that has the community, um, the schedule that we had on it, um, the uh, um, the church, um...
Which slide?
No, there's a, there's a schedule slide. There's a slide that has the meeting schedules. I think it may have been even close to the first one.
Yep, bingo. You got it. Thank you.
So, um, on, on July twenty-seventh, we, we had an initial community meeting with Park Street Christian Church. Um, and uh, that, the um, the conversations had been very uh, informal uh, with the church for uh, quite a while as they were, they were beginning to understand what was involved, how to... The, you know, the, the congregation is not familiar with how, how uh, the project, uh, project development happens. And so there were some conversations that they were having internally about how to go about this. And the plans really began to crystallize in May and June of this year. Um, and as soon as we began to have more crystallized plans where we could, we could uh, communicate what could happen on the site, uh, the, the, the church called a um, a neighborhood meeting that wasn't required. It was really just a uh, an informational meeting. The first required meeting was on August tenth. Um, I don't know whether uh, maybe Sunshine, maybe, do you want to uh, um, uh, add anything to that?
Let me, let me just make a, a report on this, uh, just so the public understands. We probably are five to six months away from, five months away from, four, five months away from making a recommendation. So the, the public has four or five months to advise us. And then council probably will not vote on this until February. So there's still lots of time for public input and lots of time for us all to deliberate.
I will also make a clarification in that um, the three thousand hours that um, that Habitat spent with the, with the neighbors was not the three thousand hours that they spent with the neighborhoods around uh, Southwood. It was three thousand hours that they spent with the residents of Southwood uh, developing and and designing their own neighborhood. So the precedent of spending that amount of time with the surrounding neighborhood is uh, it's not a one-for-one uh, comparison. But we, we uh, we called a meeting as soon as we felt like we had information that was um, was dependable and was uh, where we could uh, where we could give uh, give um, specific information about what kind of development could happen.
And a recommendation and um, decision is that, again, we're talking first of the year for recommendation, probably February for a decision. So we've got time to get more feedback from the public on this.
If it would be helpful, I'll just add two cents, just a bookend, either end of the, of the conversation. As Bruce mentioned, the timeline is driven by a March low-income housing tax credit application process and having to work backwards from that timing. Although we were, that, that's the far end bookend, on the front end bookend, um, we started having conversations with Bruce and his team and Park Street Christian Church uh, maybe four or five months ago. But as, as anyone who is involved in development knows, it takes a great deal of time to work through what the possibilities are on the site. Uh, and it take, it also, we, we did not actually finalize a partnership until recently in the last couple of months. So it's, it's, it's actually been a very compressed process from our side as well. And we went out to the community as quickly as was possible with, to be able to show them drawings and ideas to be, to respond to as soon as we possibly could.
Thanks. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Mrs. Stolzenberg?
Sure, um, let's see. I've got, um, I guess two, two themes of questions. Um, so I guess first we'll start with uh, easy stuff, uh, parking. Um, you guys, you have fifty, you guys know I love it. Uh, fifty-four parking spaces for fifty units. Um, that is, I think, the, the amount required by code. Um, but you say in the uh, in your like, application narrative or uh, your, your documents here, uh, that you were gonna provide parking to meet uh, the amount that you've seen uh, in actual use um, at, at other PHA properties. Um, so are you saying that you're exceeding that amount? Um, or, I mean, are you putting more parking than, than you need here?
Uh, Sunshine, do you want to handle that one?
So our informal assessment of um, the parking needs at other similar senior communities in our, and amongst the properties that we own or operate is around three-quarters of a parking spot per apartment. Um, however, because we're in a neighborhood where there is some on-street parking but not a ton, we have to also allow for visitors, jaunt, um, and other types of parking. And we don't have a whole lot of overflow capacity without impacting the neighborhood significantly. So we went through a process of evaluating the right number of parking spots. And as you know, Bory and the rest of the commission, there's no ma- magic rule. There's no way to predict it absolutely. But we felt like this is the right balance point between um, keeping parking at a minimum as, as low as we can, but also not overburdening the neighborhood with potential peak flow with visitors and and jaunts and other, other uses.
So, um, this actually reminded me when I saw it in the application, uh, that you guys, uh, for Friendship Court, uh, submitted some parking, uh, some actual parking data, uh, just a few years ago in twenty eighteen to City Council to ask uh, for an addition to the parking modified zone. Um, and as I recall, or, you know, as I read in that study, uh, the peak usage uh, was a little under point seven-five spaces per unit. Um, and the on-street parking was not being utilized um, by residents. And uh, that point seven-five included visitors, uh, because the um, you know, that, the actual number of cars you had registered on-site was significantly lower than that. Um, so is it, is it the case that senior housing requires more parking uh, than uh, you know, generally available housing? Um, I mean, my explanation would be that it would be the opposite, but I, I could see the other way.
So I think there are some differences between Friendship Court and, I mean, Friendship Court, as you know, is, is, is um, uh, family housing, not senior-focused, although there are some seniors onsite, of course. Um, I think Friendship Court is unique amongst um, our, our, the properties that we operate in part because of its core location in the heart of the city and the fact that you don't, uh, and the proximity to the, the bus, central bus zone. Um, I think that, um, even though people uh, may not necessarily have a hundred percent choice about where they live based on their income, I do think there's a little bit of a self-selection process that happens there at Friendship Court that's a little bit different than our senior communities. So I would agree with you in principle that I would expect, if you look at uh, other family properties we have, we don't necessarily have the same parking counts as we do at Friendship Court, uh, at least in, in, in an informal account level. Um, so I think Friendship Court is a little bit of a, a mis-comparison. Um, if you compare our other family properties to our senior properties, I think you'll see that the senior properties are a lower count um, as a comparison. And that's, that, in part, that's why we lined it up the way we did here.
Okay, um, that kind of segues nicely into my second question here. Um, in looking at the unit mix, uh, it's uh, what is it, about half, uh, three, or two-bedroom, a few three-bedrooms, and then uh, a little under half one-bedroom, is that right? Um, is, or, or what, what made you guys come to that, that unit mix? You know, I would expect for senior housing, um, you know, would primarily be people uh, without kids in the house. Um, and that it would tend to be skewed towards, towards one-bedroom. So is the intent that it be like co-living situations, or you put multiple seniors in one unit? Um, or uh, or is that driven by the parking requirement, where if you added more units, you, you'd have to add more parking?
No, it's, um, it's, it's a um, an unfortunate proclivity of the low-income tax credit program. So the, the program, the LI-TAC, that's the acronym for Low-Income Housing Tax Credit. The way that the state of Virginia structures it is they do not differentiate between a senior community and a family community in their guidelines. And um, as you probably know, uh, it's a very competitive process to get funding. So you have to check every possible box you can to be, in, in terms of getting points, to be competitive. They have an artificial cap at the percentage of one-bedroom apartments in any given property to be able to check a certain number of points. Um, and that, frankly, you know, if we had our druthers, we probably would have had a higher preponderance of one-bedrooms compared to two. Um, but if we want to get this project funded, we have to check the boxes where we can. And there, you know, some plate ways we have control over that, in some ways we have to we're at the wherewithal of the, the way that the funding is structured.
I would also suggest that, um, knowing the, you know, like, hey, there are a lot of grandparents who are raising, um, raising their, 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 the moms and daughters. were raising, raising their, 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 the moms and daughters' kids, and so we need extra bedrooms for, for that.
We certainly have that condition as well at many of our properties. And we also have some seniors with live-in caretakers where a second bedroom is necessary as well.
Yeah, so like, what is exactly the, the requirement for the age then? Is it just that there has to be a member of the household that's above that threshold? Or does it mean that kids are bad?
It means that the, the primary leaseholder has to be, has to meet that senior threshold. They could, they could, for example, have grandchildren with them. They could instead be living with a partner who's younger than senior age. They could be have their adult child living with them if they were both on the lease.
Okay. And I guess my last question here is, do you feel that this proposal that you've come forward with is, is the, the boldest, you know, most community-serving proposal that you can make, either financially viable or practically viable? Or is this a cautious proposal because you're worried about getting it passed, even though, you know, in a, in a different scenario, you might be able to house more families in need?
That is a very interesting question, Rory. Every, every time you look at a, a project like this, you have to balance a wide variety of priorities and feasibilities. Obviously, this, one of the site challenges here around critical slope, available land, the existing tree cover, wanting to be responsible, responsible and responsive to that, the potential for, you know, how much surface parking we're going to be building, the fundability, like how, how much funding do we, like, how many units do we need to have to be able to pass the critical funding threshold? But at the same time, keep height in place that's, that's neighborhood sensitive, but at the same time, you know, make sure that we, we have elevator accessible buildings. There are a million factors that kind of come to bear in terms of that decision-making process. Is this the only solution could have come forward with? Probably not. You know, from, if you looked at pure raw numbers of how many units could go on this site, that would probably was, would be more than what we're showing. But as a developer that wants to be context-sensitive and, and, and sensitive to what the church itself wants to see, because that was part of the negotiation process, is the impact on their land as it currently exists, what the, what the neighborhood wants to see, what we think is, is achievable from a funding perspective? Because honestly, right now, the more number of, the larger number of units we propose, the bigger the funding gap is. And as you know, construction costs are continuing to skyrocket in unprecedented ways. And so we're trying to balance all of those pieces together. There's no perfect answer, but I would say it's, this proposal is the one that we want to build.
Now let's move on to Mr. Zillie H.
So just so the public understands, can you clarify the significance of LIHTC funding? Is that important to the success of this project?
Thanks for that question, Lyle. The project will not happen without low-income housing tax credits. 95% of the affordable housing across the nation gets built on an annual basis, utilizes the LIHTC program. It is the largest public-private enterprise nationwide that'll, and it, and its singular purpose is to build affordable rental housing. You cannot build affordable rental housing without LIHTC funding, hands down, no question. Not unless you get free land and free construction, which doesn't exist. So it, it probably covers in the ballpark of 50 to 55% of the construction costs. And you then build on the top of that, probably anywhere from five to 10 additional layers of funding in order to make a project meet the affordability, depth of affordability that we want to achieve and make the project viable over the long term. But the baseline critical funding source is LIHTC.
Thank you, that's helpful to understand. I understand a little bit better about the parking story. There is an existing very large service lot there with relatively little tree cover, as I recall. Is there a possibility of using that as a resource to meet parking requirements of different uses and to possibly introduce some trees into that existing impermeable surface?
I'll, I'll take a run at that one. And that is, the, using that parking for any kind of, of resourcing for parking for the, for the housing units would, would create a, a kind of unusable connection between the two because of the topography and the distance and the remoteness. That parking lot was built back when the church was built and before, I think, before many of the, of the zoning and planning standards were established. And, and so that, that part of the, the property is not intended to be part of the scope of, of this project. As the church, as the church decides how they may want to improve their property over time, I'm, I'm certain that, that the kind of landscape and sustainability of, of anything that they would do would be, that would be part of their consideration, but that is not part of the scope of what we're looking at right here.
And finally, I understand the, the motor vehicle story of, of this site. Increasingly, people are talking to me about, of all things, bicycles, e-bikes, especially seniors, senior communities increasingly are bicycle communities. How, how does that story work in this proposal?
I think I'll, I'll put that one, you've sunshine, because I'm not aware of how the, the e-bikes are, are working into the communities that you're serving.
So I will say that, that's, that there are many, many details, bike parking being one of them, that have not been fleshed out, which is not, since this isn't the site planning phase, this is the, the zoning phase. But I agree with you, with, with every project we look at moving forward, sufficient bike parking is a critical part of, of necessary transportation infrastructure. And it will be part of the story when the site planning process gets underway.
You don't have to, but I, I think that you can use bike parking as a credit against motor vehicle parking, if you wish. Someone, please correct me if I'm way off.
There are some credits that you can get, yes.
That's what I have, thank you.
And Mr. Lindra.
I have no question now. Can you, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. But I do have a huge apology to the commissioners and to all the attendees for all the distractions I've created. I, this is the first time I've zoomed with an iPhone and, as you can tell, or that I've, I've had a lot of trouble. So I'm here now, though.
You're doing well, you're, you're fine. We, we didn't notice the distractions. So the, the first question I've got is for either Ms. Robertson or Ms. Creasy. If we actually do eventually a vote to approve, recommend approval of the PUD, are we able to restrict the demographics into perpetuity? So the demographics would be for senior housing. Are we able to do that? Ms. Robertson, Ms. Creasy? Anybody?
If they can, oh, go ahead, Lisa. All right. Trying to hit the right button so I can speak with you all. So when a proposed PUD is submitted, that is a rezoning application. And so the applicant is describing for you the specific project that they are proposing to build. And that project will have the characteristics described in the PUD development plan, including the narrative that comes with that and any proffers that are submitted. You do have the ability to recommend approval of the specific project that's been described to you. But you don't yourself, this is not like a special use permit where you have the ability to come up with conditions or of approval yourself.
Okay, I'm sorry, forgive me. I was distracted by answering a question that came across. The answer is, we cannot restrict this into perpetuity to senior demographics. So if we approve this, they could.
Not unless the applicant's PUD development plan says this specific project is for a senior living community, for people who have these characteristics.
Okay, so applicant, you've been given guidance from council, and I suggest that you take guidance from council into consideration when you use it with your application. Mr. Brennan, your questions about the traffic impact?
Sure. So I had met with the applicant and with Timmons to kind of go over what we would expect from traffic impact analysis. We agreed that, you know, doing both these projects in, in one study did make sense. They, they did send over kind of their preliminary traffic study. I don't have a final version of it yet. As far as the numbers go, they had contacted me, you know, again, with COVID, a lot of, a lot of traffic studies, a lot of concerns from the neighbors and stuff about what volumes are now versus, you know, what they were pre-COVID, what they're going to look like post-COVID. So we did, we did kind of do an adjustment. So the, the numbers that are in the study, I am comfortable with. We, you know, what the existing numbers were and kind of inflated them to, you know, kind of pre-COVID numbers and then inflated that to, you know, regular traffic growth. So as far as the, the raw numbers go, I'm, I'm happy with the traffic report. I know that the applicant with the, the church site in particular, in their presentation, they had noted kind of cutting back some of the, the foliage and that kind of stuff at the corner with Cutler. I know that I did have conversations with them about maybe even possibly cutting into the critical slopes there to get better site distance. That's a man-made critical slope currently on that hill. So, you know, if that's something, I believe that we have it in our code, that, you know, if critical slope disturbances to support, you know, roadway type of things, that it's a waiver there for that. So that's something that I would be in favor of if we can get as much site distance in there. I believe they did note in their, their traffic study that, you know, it is below the recommended site distance for, for intersection as it is currently today. So it's nothing, really nothing to do with this project. But if we can improve that, that would definitely be better. One thing that Amanda Poncy, our bicycle and pedestrian, had noted was in our bicycle pedestrian master plan, that, you know, that sidewalk that they're asking to waive is a, you know, one of the priorities of the neighborhood in that of getting down to the intersection or a Vanna Trail. They also, I believe they note in the, the traffic study about using the, the bus stop, which the only bus stop that runs currently is north to south. So the bus stop is on the west side, the opposite side of Park Street from this development. And currently, there's no way to get across that. So I would probably recommend that, you know, as part of this development, we look at some sort, some sort of crossing at Cutler or somewhere around there to, you know, get, again, if it's, if this is going to be an elderly development, it's, it's kind of unrealistic to expect them to go walk all the way up, you know, to get to the signal at, at North Street, which there's no sidewalk on that stretch between Cutler and North either. So there's really no way to get to that signal and get across to the other side. So those, those were my concerns with this one. I don't know if you wanted me to talk to Maccar or if that's going to be a separate.
We'll get to that in a moment, yeah. So related to that are the critical slopes. Well, part of the reason they wanted to avoid doing the, the sidewalks is because of the critical slope issues. If I remember correctly, there is a creek or a branch, I think it's called, what's it called? Shank Branch, is that right?
There's branch there.
There's, it's like to the north of Park Street. So the question is for India Staff, Ms. Creasy, Ms. Dakavuna, anyone, Mr. O'Connor. Am I worried about, is this thing far enough away from the creek not to impact the creek? And if it is, are we going to be able to get the Mr., our, our engineer engaged to, to coach Sunshine and the team as well as to develop this thing so that it will have limited impact on the creek?
Well, so the, the other issue here that they had noted not wanting to install that sidewalk is they don't want to cut into that bank. The existing, the existing pavement width there is around 35 feet. So with our current standards and design manual, you only need 11 feet for each lane. So there, there should be enough room there, and a climbing lane is another thing in the bicycle pedestrian master plan. I forgot to, to add that, you know, climbing lane coming from Melbourne up the, the hill to the, you know, heading south, there should be enough room there to install a five-foot sidewalk, install a five-foot multi-use or, no, climbing lane, and still have room for, you know, two 11-foot travel lanes with very little impact to the slopes.
Okay. But in general, they're asking for a, look, they're, they're, they're trending towards asking for a waiver for other reasons as well. So I'll ask Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Creasy, Ms. Dakavuna, am I worried about my creek as well as to this project?
Well, we know you're going to be worried about the creek, and, and that's always a good thing to, to keep in mind. We're still in the early phases of evaluation. So I don't know that we received any comments specific to that at this point, but we, we are noting that tonight.
Thank you, that's, my, my objective was just to flag the applicant. That, 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 that would be something I'll be watching very carefully, protect my creeks. Demographics, traffic. Oh, Joey, you didn't talk about the trees. Are you cool with the trees? We're losing all the trees with this.
Yeah, I, so for the bit of the presentation, because of my troubles, I didn't see all the presentation. But for the part that I saw and the preliminary review that we have of the drawings, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with the, how the proposal, the concept plan minimizes a significant damage to the, to most of the trees. We preserve the trees on the hillside, the critical slope. It's still, it, it remains a very wooded site. And yeah, I, I, as a concept plan, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with what's being proposed.
Okay. All right, let's go left to right and just give any other advice we'd like to give. So Ms. Russell, any additional advice you'd like to give the applicant?
No, I mean, you certainly got me thinking about the importance of transit and, and ability to access that. And I'm not sure I entirely appreciate where someone can and can't get to, but certainly be, be thinking about that. The, the accessibility of the site for, for those without vehicles. That's all.
Mr. Stolzenberg.
I first off, I'd like to applaud the church and everyone involved in the project. That seems like a great proposal. It's exactly the sort of need we have in the community, and it's great to see you guys coming together to, and using your land to make this happen. I, I would just say, I, I'd agree that I'd like to see a crosswalk there if you're going to ask for a waiver. If you can build the sidewalk without impacting the bank, that would be great too. But crosswalk, and that might require a flashing beacon, given the curve, just to make it safe across the street. And I'd, I'd also urge you to, to look to see if you can be a little bit bolder with this plan, to add more units potentially without increasing the footprint or the impervious surface of the proposal, whether that be by adding a floor. Because right now, your, your height is beneath that of even the fairly low slung church, let alone the Montessori school next door. And the visual impact is roughly nothing. And, you know, to me, I don't think that affordable senior housing is something that we need to be ashamed of and hide in the woods. I think it's okay if people can see it. And so to the extent that we can house more. I think it's okay if people can see it. And so to the extent that we can house more seniors in need, I would encourage you guys to do so, any way you can. But again, thank you for the proposal. Looking forward to seeing it come to us.
This is so hit.
Mr. Stolzenberg has stolen the words out, out of my brain. That's extremely well put. This is, I think, a project, at least in concept, that I, I think the community could have some civic pride in. I'm seeing passive house, I'm seeing solar panels, I'm seeing affordable housing for seniors. This is, how to put this, people, many people have a very negative view of affordable housing. Sort of this idea of sort of like government, maybe it's Soviet, but it, you know, it's a negative for the community. It's, you know, maybe it's crime, maybe it's litter. This, at least in concept, strikes me as a different story. And I think a more positive one, and one that's more relevant to the future of the city of Charlottesville. So I, I applaud what I see, but I, I agree. I think we can elevate.
Mr. Linder.
Um, I'm, I think this is a, a great conceptual start to the project. I, I think that it is very skillful in its design of minimizing the impact of multi-unit larger buildings within a residential district. It, it very nicely preserves the, 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 the critical slopes. The tree that works well with the church becoming an ancillary use behind the church, keeping the, the frontage from the road. The appearance the same. I, I think this is fantastic start to the project. It's a, it's going to be a, it's a process. We have many months to go, but this is, I'm, I'm very excited about this project.
Yeah, so I, I like what you guys are attempting to do. Frankly, I relish the chance to see this happen. I would only ask that you do something in whatever you present to guarantee that this will be senior housing and not morph into something else. And I would also ask that you work with the engineers to make sure that you protect the Shank's Branch and do a good job of presenting something to the engineers that make, may, will, will help them become comfortable with the protection of the critical slopes.
The applicant had a number of questions that were part of their application. I believe it was on slide number twenty-one. So it might be a good idea to make sure that those have been touched upon and.
I think we've done that, but what I'll do is I'll ask the applicant to go down those six questions and make sure that we haven't helped with them.
I'd say two things. I'll let Kurt do that, but I'll let you, also let you decide if Sunshine has a very good concise summary of, of PHA's strategy towards long-term affordable housing. If you would like to hear that kind of summary, I think that might, that might help you frame your expectations over the, over the next, over this process, but.
Okay, we've got, we've got forty-five minutes to get through that and through MACA. So let's first go through the list. There are a couple of technical questions that we didn't attempt to answer. Especially the MACA side, MACA side, but whoever wants to, on your side, wants to take the lead and ask any questions that weren't addressed, please do.
Go ahead, Kurt.
Well, I'll just quickly, the first one was just to make sure we were on the same page that the PUD was the correct approach to this site. Because there are other rezoning options that would help us achieve this density, but I think it was hinted earlier, the PUD allows us to be transparent and kind of provide the, the expectations for the community and make some promises in a more direct way. And so that's why we chose the PUD is because we wanted to make those promises. So you know, we don't have a mix of housing tops, but we have clustered our housing here. And so we just wanted to make sure there wouldn't be any surprises about approaching this as a PUD versus.
And I think Jody has channeled former Commissioner Jenny by saying that yes, this is supposed as R three. This makes sense. Jody, I'd speak for you, but.
That's great. Thank you.
He's nodding yes.
Okay.
You, you could proper those rather than submitting them as a PUD site plan, right? In, in order to give the same promises in R three. I mean, to be honest, it doesn't matter to me, but, you know, it seems if we can reduce the kind of ad hoc zonings we have of all these PUDs scattered around the city, it's going to reduce workload on staff in the long run, but maybe that's not true if there's a bunch of
We, we felt like the proffer process is a little less transparent to the neighborhood and those that are trying to understand what we're trying to do. So yeah, I, I think we, we just as a team decided that the PUD was more revealing and more easy to kind of digest. And you didn't have to make as many proffers, although we will have some proffers to guarantee some of those things that we want to have included, but it, it gives that kind of better guarantee for the future as well, because any change to this would require a change to the PUD, which.
Just, just to keep us moving, because again, I think MACA is going to be a little more complex than this. Did, are there any questions, the six questions that you asked that we did not address?
I did want to make it clear, they asked one question concerning what the church would have to do if they had development ideas that they wanted to do later. If this is rezoned to a PUD, that any change to the site would have to go through a PUD process. So they would have to come forward through this process again for any changes that they may have to their site. So that's just a good awareness item at, at this front part of the discussion.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And so I, I think there's a question that we will end up asking, maybe if we can have a dialogue after this meeting with staff about the church's plans will probably not come together fast enough to be included in the final PUD package. But we generally know what their parameters are programmatically. We wanted to try to define a future church area if we could without getting too specific about the exact footprint. And we can most likely make some promises about how tall or how much expansion the church would do within some limits. But we don't know if we'll have a design, well, we won't have a design. And we're working with the church as well as a separate issue. So we may just need to get some guidance from you guys on how we can include that possibility without being so specific that it's limiting to the church. And the, the main thing is they're not expected, they don't plan to expand their sanctuary there, which kind of drives the parking load. So they're, they're generally just going to expand their preschool and provide a fellowship hall proper, because right now they moved their chairs out of the way to have a fellowship hall and then they moved their chairs back to have worship surface. They just want to have a separate room for fellowship. And so maybe we'll just ask for some help on how to build that into our application.
And, and Kurt, Kurt, I just point out that in fairness to the community, they, they should know as much as possible about what the church is planning to do too in the future.
Yeah, we, we mentioned it in the community meetings and we highlighted the area where the church is going to expand, likely expand a few years from now. Their plans are far away, also dependent on their own funding. But if that ends up being a, a footprint we need to put down and kind of dash in a box, we'll try to do that as best we can. But yeah, we, we definitely want them to know what the plans are.
It's, it's actually shadowed into one of the drawings that we provided.
Yeah, tonight we actually shadowed it in. That's right.
Okay, thanks.
But I think we can ask the rest of our questions at a different time. You know, these other ones that are related to the formality of how to register the easements for the trail crossings and how to make those connections are probably just more technical issues that staff can help us with, so.
Oh yeah, I did have a note, Jim. I think Chris is on, so yeah, you need to have a chat with Parks and Rec as well on, on that stuff too. And Chris is, is monitoring this.
We'll do that. I think that's all for our questions for Park Street unless the team had any that we needed to have direct. Okay, thank you.
And let's then segue into MACA. Is Mr. O'Connor doing MACA as well?
Okay, so I'll introduce the second item, which is another rezoning request, again by Piedmont Housing Alliance in partnership with BRW Architects, Timmons Group, MACA and Habitat for Humanity. And this is a rezoning request for ten twenty-one, ten twenty-three and ten twenty-five Park Street, which is the current MACA site as well as two single-family properties on Park Street, consisting of about nine point three acres. The current zoning is R one residential, but they are proposing a rezoning to PUD, land unit development to accommodate a redevelopment of the site with a mix of apartments, townhomes and duplexes, non-residential childcare space and parking spaces. And with that, I will turn it over to the applicants.
Right before we do that, we have one statement that needs to be read into the record. So let me, let me bring that up real quick. And this is on behalf of Ms. Dow, who wasn't, who isn't able to be here right now, but this is a statement pertaining to this application. And it says, she has a statement to make regarding participation in the planning commission's discussions about a rezoning application involving property owned by MACA, who is my employer, her employer. I am required to disqualify myself from participating in this transaction of the commission. The nature of my conflict of interest is the annual salary that I receive as a MACA employee. If anyone would like to review the more detailed written disclosure statement filed, that's been filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission. So I have that information. We have that on hand as needed. And Ms. Dow can participate in the Park Street application, just not able to participate in the MACA.
And I'll probably note that there are at least two, maybe three questions that in, in your list of questions that you're, seven questions that you want to ask that I frankly would rather defer to staff to answer. Maybe other commissioners will take a wreck at it, but I'm not technically competent to answer them. But anyway, so Mr. O'Connor. Or who's up? The applicant's up, right? Applicant.
Uh, okay, I, this is Bruce Ward again, and I'll jump in and I will again serve as the tour guide through the, through the presentation. The process for this, this proposal is very similar to the one that we just, we just reviewed, although the project itself is, is, is significantly different. Let's, let's go to the next slide. The, the collaboration this time is between Piedmont Housing Alliance, our, our firm, BRW Architects, Timmons Group, MACA and Habitat for Humanity as part of this, this proposal as well. Let's go on. Again, we all know where the dates are. We have the same driving schedule because this project, again, it depends upon a successful application for low income housing tax credits, which is that March submission deadline. And the schedule is generated by the kind of reverse engineering of the, of the entitlement process to meet that March deadline. Let's go on to the next. This project, as I think as most people are aware, is the current MACA site, which is entered off of Park Street just north of the two fifty bypass on MACA Drive. Currently has some relatively aged buildings along the crest of the slope. The, there, there's a relatively level area in the central part of the site. And then the slope breaks rather sharply to the west, just below where the existing buildings are. There's a gentler, more manageable slope that comes down to the south towards two fifty. And then there is a long stone wall on the north side adjacent to a residential property. I will note that the two buildings that front on Park Street north of MACA Drive, the house to the south of MACA Drive are part of this proposal.
Might need to go to the next slide there, Bruce.
Go on to the next, right there. There we go. You can see the two houses along Park Street. You can see MACA Drive, the existing conditions. There is also this kind of wonderful old drive and drop-off path and that was part of the original estate of, on the property. And then some quite beautiful terraced, terraced landscape gardens that go down to the southwest of the property as well. And you'll see how we have sought to incorporate those, those elements of the historic landscape into the proposal. Let's go on. Again, photographs of the site, you can see the, the photographs of the terrace gardens in number one and then the open green space down below that. And then number three is that, that, that trail access or the, the, what was the old driveway when two fifty was a, was a two-lane road. So let's go on. The zoning here is R one, currently in the proposed land use map. It is, it is proposed to be a neighborhood mixed use. I'm trying to read it, neighborhood mixed use node, I think it is, right? Yeah. I'm right, we're, we're reading that correctly. Let's go on to the next. Oh, this is the generic layout diagram of the layout in which the two houses along Park Street are preserved. MACA Drive, we are proposing to in fact relocate MACA Drive directly across from Davis Avenue to clean up that intersection that now is misaligned and creates a whole series of very difficult interactions along Park Street. Along the, the proposed new MACA Drive, we are, are proposing market rate townhouses, some, a number of habitat townhouses and duplexes, and then two multifamily buildings that are more towards the center of the site or center of the land. And you can see how they are framed around the old historic stone walls that are there. And there is a community green in the middle of the, of the, of the property. Let's go on to the next. The, the summary of this is that we are proposing sixty-five apartment units, twenty townhouses, eight duplex units and two existing homes. And then in addition to that, MACA will continue, is proposing to continue to operate an early childhood learning center that would be no more than seventy-five hundred square feet on property. We are proposing a hundred and forty-seven parking spaces and you can see the data down here in the way that the housing is, the kind of mixed housing that is a mix of, of market rate, affordable habitat units that are homeownership. And then the rental apartment buildings that are proposed in what we're calling building one and two. Let's go on to the next. Affordability, there are currently eighty-five proposed affordable units. And that, those are the habitat units and the, the PHA units. There are eight market rate units and that includes the two homes that are, that face onto Park Street, which will continue to be residential, residential homes as well. Let's go on to the next. This is a, this is a conceptual section with Park Street on the right that, and you can see how this, the, there's a kind of basically close to level area in the middle of the site. And then you can also see where this, where the landscape sort of transitions to the steeper slope that goes down to the Ravana Trail, Shank's Branch and the John Warner Parkway. We have organized the site to have the single-family homes along MACA Drive, which relate more to the scale of the existing neighborhood. And then the multifamily homes, multifamily homes are actually planned further deeper into the site where, where we can take advantage of the, of the the topography that the actual, the, the existing buildings already take advantage of. And we are proposing to sort of use that break in the, in the topography to, to minimize the volume of this, of these, these buildings towards the neighborhood and take advantage of an extra story going down the slope. Let's go on to the next. Again, this is back to the, the basic, this basic layout of the, of the, of the proposal. Go on to the next. Um, this is a very conceptual view of the duplex units and the townhomes that would be along. This is a very conceptual view of the duplex units and the townhomes that would be along Maka Drive on either side. On the street would be laid out with, with the main street, a planting strip with the, with the sidewalk separated from the, from the drive. And then front porches on all of the units going in. That planting strip will allow us to plant tree streets along Maka Drive coming off of Park Street. And one of the interesting factors is as you enter this site, once the building is gone, you actually see all the way to the Blue Ridge Mountains. So let's go on to the next. This is a, again, a very early conceptual view of that central park or that central green. The sort of village green with the townhouses on the left. And then on the right, that is the scale of the, what will be three story buildings facing the green. That's also where the landscape, the topography breaks to the west. If this drawing were a little bit wider, you would see that the, the slope goes down to the right. And you would get a lower fourth story on these buildings facing west. And then beyond the townhouses on the left, you can see the other, the other multifamily building further on down the green, the village green. So let's go on to the next. One of the things that we wanted to just point out is that when we talk about building affordable housing, there are a lot of images that we have based on what was built in the fifties and sixties and early seventies of what affordable housing is. This is in fact affordable housing in Charlottesville. These are Wickham Pond out in Crozay. I think Cleveland Avenue, these are habitat, affordable homes, homeownership here. And so these are the kinds of homes that we, we are proposing to, to introduce along Maka Drive as you enter the, enter the property from Park Street. Let's go on to the next. Also, the, 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 the apartment buildings are, 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 will be similar in some sense or another to what are the proposed P H A apartment buildings that are currently under, under development for the entry to the Southwood Community along Hickory Road. And so you can see that both the amenities around the buildings and the buildings themselves, again, again, built to passive house standards, eighty five percent of the exterior of these buildings will be brick. And by, and that's just part of the Lytech application. But see that these are, this is not what we, we imagine as our, as our grandparents' affordable housing. Let's go on to the next. Here again are those, those kind of views of the volume of the proposed development. This is the three story, three and a half story building along the, along the west side of the property from the, from the bypass. Let's go on to the next. Scott, do you want to jump in here with the, the other half of the traffic study?
Sure, be happy to. Again, you know, we focused for the purpose of this site, really at the intersection of Maka Drive, Davis Avenue and Park. As you can imagine, the through volumes on Park Street showed a level of service A and operated fine. They have the through movement. The side streets operated a level of service C or D in the A M and P and peaks. We anticipate that traffic coming from the Maka site to get a little worse with the development of the site. The volumes we counted out there were fairly low. With all that being said, the traffic generated by this site does technically warrant a northbound left turn lane on Park Street. From an operational perspective, it's not required. However, you know, again, we look at the operations of this intersection. A northbound left would be a benefit. However, the corridor itself is constrained based on the limited right of way, the existing sidewalks and rock walls in the area. So that's definitely something to consider when looking at improvements for this intersection. With that being said, I think Jonathan could probably touch base on a couple other aspects of this project related to site distance and the realignment of the intersection.
Yes, a bit of the next slide here. As Scott was saying, we're constrained by the existing right of way and geometry of the road and what we're able to do on the, the parcels with the controls. And so looking at this and hearing community input and also just looking at ways we can make this intersection as best as possible with this project. We're looking at realigning Maka Drive currently in the red dash down below the, the gray shaded line. That's the current alignment. As you can see, it's offset from Davis Drive. It creates a lot of conflict with not knowing who's taking the left turn first or just those offset intersections are, are less safe. So we're gonna look at realigning Maka Drive up to the north directly across from Davis. Also eliminated driveway from the property to the north, reduce conflict points there. And then also look at removing some brush and fencing and some other obstacles to increase the site distance north on, on Park Street. So those, that's a major improvement there. Currently, there's not a lot of site distance out of Maka Drive. We're also looking at preserving the no left turn lane out of Maka. So it'd be basically only a right and potential straight movement out of Maka. Is what we're looking at at this point. And that would also help increase safety of the intersection and maintain that current condition. So I guess we can go to the next slide here. I'm not sure if it's. Okay, so here's just a little more background on the site distance, looking north currently. If you're a car trying to take a right turn, looking north, watch for oncoming traffic. You can see there's a number of obstacles there to visibility. And so it shows the current view over on the left in kind of a darker color. And then the potential improvements and how we could increase that site distance. So the drivers turning out, the cars coming down the road. So go on the next one. And this is a map here. I'm not sure if this still part of our presentation or kind of the additional information. But basically this is a, a map here showing the proposed site and showing what would potentially be public right of way versus what would be private area, private roads and parking lots. And one thing we are looking at here is having a loop, a person coming to the site and circulate around the parking lot. But we're also trying to minimize the pavement, minimize asphalt. So we didn't want to have both a public loop, which would reduce the green space and then a, a private parking lot there. So one thing we're looking at is essentially having a right of way or access easement to the city. So we could have a public loop through the site, but really minimize the asphalt and the pavement needed for that. And I guess we can go to the next slide here as well. And basically this is another slide similar to the Park Street presentation where we're responding to some of the things we've heard in the community meetings. We'll talk a bit about traffic, intersection improvements that we've been adding in as we've gotten feedback. Also, Bruce, I don't know if you want to talk about the bike and pedestrian connectivity through the side. I know you mentioned that a bit earlier.
Yeah, I'll jump in here in that, in that one of the things that we heard in, in the, in our community meetings was the access to, to the Rivana Trail or that, the bike and ped trail that, that parallels the Parkway. And currently you now walk along, walk or ride your bike along Park Street down to the entrance ramp onto the, the highway. And then you're walking or biking right along the edge of 250 until you connect to the, the, the trail beyond. And one of the things that we thought could be a real benefit to this kind of connectivity to the, the larger neighborhood is actually providing the, an ability to walk, walk along that, that treed street, which will be Maka Drive. And then down along through the, the kind of town, the court, the, the sort of town green along there. And then, you know, be able to, be able to find a path through that, that terrace landscape or even back, back through that old historic drive with the stone gate. And you can see what we're looking at is trying to make a connection down at the western edge that would actually allow you to connect to the trail and, and kind of bypass all of that kind of treacherous pedestrian way along Park Street and then along the entrance ramp to the, to 250. And so anytime we do something like this, we, we obviously, we want to make the, the, the proposal that we're, we're, we're doing the best for the people who are going to be living in the proposal, but also to offer something back to the community. The other thing you'll notice is that we're planning on developing a kind of screening landscape buffer along the north edge on our side of the stone wall. There's a, actually quite a nice stone wall along most of that edge of the property. And we've configured the parking in a way that would give us a slope that we could plant along in there and, and buffer, buffer the, the property, which is actually uphill from, from our property along that north side of the property. We can come back to this, this slide, I think the questions in here are bike and pedestrian. We can talk about affordability, which is our number three. Boy, it's really small. What? I think we've addressed the, the issue of the, the non-residential uses being a, 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 an early, early learning center. And then the area, all of the property will be maintained through some kind of arrangement between Maka and the, and the, and the homes as a, as a kind of a, some kind of community and homeowners association, something like that. And, and then the other issue was bringing the views into the site. And I think the development of the tree lined street from Park Street into the site was, is part of that transition from the neighborhood into the property. Let's go back to, let's go to the next one, I think. And yeah, there we are. So that's basically our, our presentation and we are happy to sort of slide around it and answer any questions. I think when we get to these questions for the planning commission, I think Kurt, you're gonna, you'll take over and, and, and give us some guidance through that.
So what I'd like to do now, with your permission, is to invite the public to comment. And then the commissioners will ask questions and then we'll provide input. So Ms. Parks, are there folks in the public that would like to chat about this?
Everyone, if you would like to make public comment at this time, click the raise hand icon or press star nine on your telephone. Right now we have one, which is Diane Dale.
Hello, Diane. You got three minutes.
Great, thank you. I'm speaking tonight as, as an individual resident, but I'm on the board of the Martha Jefferson Neighborhood Association. And I'm also a member of the Comprehensive Plan Updates Steering Committee. So I've been addressing issues regarding the provision of housing in this community for at least a year and a half. So I'd like to speak in support of this project. I think it's a, a great example of the type of infill housing we should hope will be of consideration in the future across the community. I think the scale and the texture of the, the proposal fits well with the adjacent neighborhood. I think it's respectful of some of the environmental restrictions, such as the slopes, et cetera, the cultural pieces on, on the property. And it certainly is making an effort to address the issue of affordable housing in the city. I would like to note that this is an example of the public process working. The initial applicant for this site came forward with something that was not a good fit. They've now returned with a, with a site plan that is obviously of a appropriate scale and textures, I've noted. But they've also bought in a local partner, Habitat for Humanity, who has demonstrated success and knowledge in the provision of affordable housing in this community. And so it's a real good, a strengthening of this proposal. And I note this because I hope the planning commission will keep in mind the value of constructive public dialogue as they consider under the proposals for the Comprehensive Plan Update that some of the zoning proposals have included extensive by right designation of the zoning. And, and again, I think that it's real important to have the process, a constructive process, have the opportunity to work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Diane. Ms. Parks.
Up next, we have Vicky Bravo.
Hi, I'm speaking, hi, I'm speaking again on behalf of Impact. To support this project, neighborhoods succeed when housing is affordable. When elderly residents have a safe place to live, when young people can find that first apartment, when parents and children can put down roots in the community with confidence, then our whole community benefits. But today, our neighborhoods in Charlottesville and Albemarle are under pressure with over four thousand families struggling to go month to month with their rent or their mortgage. Lack of affordable housing is putting older neighbors at risk and causing families to move frequently, disrupting their lives, hurting their ability to make a living and threatening their children's success in school. It does not have to be this way. Let's more, let's make more housing more affordable and our neighborhoods more successful. Together we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Ms. Parks.
At this time, I don't see any more hands being raised. Oh.
Angela. What do you got?
Hi, this is actually the husband, Jason Hogg. Hello. I'm kind of mirroring a comment that we heard on the first proposal in terms of zoning, protecting the existing properties there in terms of like what the environment is and also providing planning safety for the property owners in a neighborhood. So I, I kind of caution against this a little bit. I'm just heard about this coming back from vacation. So to me, this sounds very much like, like a very much smoke in the dark and like ram it through kind of project as opposed to what the very first marker project a couple of years ago was when we were individually contacted by Marker to be brought in and see what, what they're planning. This time around, it was basically just a letter that they're planning some kind of things. It took us a little while to actually find access to this meeting here due to our vacation. We missed the very first meeting. So I'm really kind of worried about what is going on here. Nevertheless, I mean, as previous people have said, we do need more affordable housing in Charlottesville, so I'm definitely not against that. I just want to make sure that with multiple projects going on along Park Street, both in the city and the county, that the impact, not just to the traffic, but also to the environment and overall the, this Park Street, which was just a few years ago, alleviated by introducing the John Warner Parkway, that we're just putting the same problems right back into Park Street. And yeah, basically just want to put a light on that. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much for your input. I'll, I'll just remind the public and you, one, I'm grateful that you're, you're providing your input so early in, in, in the cycle. It is not likely that we'll make a recommendation to council until the first of the year. And then council is not likely to vote on this until a couple of months into the first of the year. So you'll have many opportunities to chime in on this, but I'm glad you're chiming in now. So thank you. Ms. Parks.
I don't see any more hands.
Okay.
Just raised their hand. If you guys make public comment, please make sure you hit the raise hand icon now so I know. Right next, we have Tim Moore.
Welcome, Tim. You have three minutes.
Hi. Wanted to say, I think this is a big improvement thing we were looking at two years ago. One thing, and I realize this is really out of the scope of what Bruce is dealing with. Uh it's about right. Um one thing, and I realize this is really out of the scope of what Bruce is dealing with. Um and but I also think it's one of these things where maybe the city could step forward and. Try to help, you know, reinstate some degree of the grid. And I realize there are problems with that, but for instance, I think the. Pressure on the Davis intersection would be different if, for instance, there was a way to bring Watson up through, but I also think that the. Uh you know, that that whole Park Street connection with the uh two fifty bypass and all that is really kind of a mess. And it'd be nice if there was some way to address that at the same time, because it's just compounding. And I'm I'm not a, you know, anti-traffic person in the sense that I understand people have to get around, but I. I think that some of the benefits of the Parkway, as far as Park Street are concerned, are pretty watered down by the fact that we still have. Uh those exits to and from uh the bypass in the very strange condition with houses. Uh entering onto those uh entry ramps. So I I just think. It's a legacy of some really bad planning from a way quite a ways back. But um you know, if if the city were able to put a shoulder in this and actually. Help at the public, private sector trying to make something work, I just think would be, there might be some urbanistically. At urbanistically advantaged things advantage advantageous things to do here if we. Could uh throw a little more weight behind what they're doing. Uh I I think, you know, what the it would be nice, for instance, if. You know, I think this is an opportunity to create a a a more of a center for that part of town. That's walkable, that we can have, you know, restore that sort of thing, that basically, I think. Creating the more of a series of nodes for the neighborhood, the the various of every neighborhoods we have would be great. And it just seems like helping them achieve that might require a little um. Forward thinking in terms of how we're dealing with uh some legacy that's really pretty badly designed. So anyway. That's my ten cents.
You too. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Um next, we have Constance.
Welcome, Constance. You've got three minutes.
Actually, my sister's gonna speak. She's also a homeowner on Davis Avenue. We each own. Okay, yes, we both live here on Davis Avenue and um we did participate in the last um proposal. For um. For um, I'm sorry, I'm trying to turn off my, oh, you were gonna feedback. Okay, come on, come on. Um we did participate at the last time of. Also, and then trying to trying to be uh, but we we, like some other people have said, we we were caught off guard by the. Short notice and we did participate in the meeting, the public meeting uh that was at Felt the Hive. Couple of weeks ago and we're very disappointed about how that public, how that meeting was run. This is much better tonight. Um lot of questions raised. I know we're still at the beginning and this this is what we're trying to do, is just get questions answered, but just a lot. We just got a lot. Um we we don't feel like everything is out on the table right now. Um. We are not against um some public housing or some more diverse housing in the neighborhood. But um one of the things we need to remember, or I think I'm correct on this, that this, this is. PUD zoning request for this particular site, but it needs to be looked at in the larger um. Uh the zoning changes that are going to be made on the land use map. I hope I'm using the right terms. That is also coming up in about February or March for approval. And this whole neighborhood is being changed to something called the Nick. Or is being proposed to be changed for neighborhood mixed use node. And that's uh I by my process, I have not participated in in some of the things that have gone on. And how how we got to that point, but um you know, I just. We're concerned with if we're reading it right, that this particular part of Park Street is going to be. Um turning into kind of a uh corridor that's leading to commercial districts. And we are talking about an R one, single family. Uh and to us, that's a huge and a huge change. So um tell me if I'm reading this wrong, but if I if we are reading this correctly, to us, that's just a huge jump. And we're kind of asking why uh why this particular part of Park Street. Um then I I would just wanted to say, I I agree with a lot of the other things that have been said. This is um a green area. This is a historical area. The history that runs down Park Street continues. The bypass. Yeah, uh up up to this part of Park Street and down to North Avenue even. And uh and there's some on Watson's. And I think a lot of people kind of forget that. And um. Uh I just, we need to keep uh keep in mind. Uh land use, green trees. I'm very upset about how many trees are disappearing. Um the last MACA proposal, uh one of the things I believe got kind of helped nix that one was. The huge amount of light, light that was going to be introduced and um the amount of parking and. What am I talking of? Hardscape between the buildings and the hardscape in this current proposal. It is more than the last proposal and I'm very concerned about it. And um we want to be good neighbors. We want, you know, we're open to proposals, but I'm I'm just not quite. I'm very concerned about some of the things I'm seeing so far. And the other thing that.
It's been three minutes, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can my sister speak while we're on here? She's also.
Um let's 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 see if there's a, let's see if there are any others that want to speak and then if.
So thank you.
Ms. Parks, would you, thank you. Ms. Parks, would you cancel them? Uh let them have a chance to um speak if there are no others, but let's see if there are others, please.
So Sarah Hanks did have her hand raised, but she lowered it. Sarah, if you did want to say something, go ahead and hit that raise hand icon again. Okay, here she comes.
Good evening, uh friends and neighbors. My name is Sarah Hanks. I'm the Executive Director of MACA. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank you all for entertaining this proposal, the partnership between PHA, MACA and Habitat. To our neighbors uh who may feel concerned, we're hopeful to partner with you moving forward and appreciate your participation in this process. When I joined MACA two years ago this week, um this, the city council had already voted against the prior proposal. And I was um responsible for understanding what was next for our property. Over the last few years and reviewing the feedback that has been provided, understanding the critical needs in our community. And responding to our clients and families experiencing low income. I believe that this is a positive step forward for our community. And the why Park Street is because we have an opportunity to blend our mission. Serving those who are experiencing low income and poverty, breaking cycles of generational poverty. Providing an opportunity for housing in an area where it does not currently exist for those. Uh who do not have financial resources. And to do so in a manner that allows us to continue operating our organization. And providing the critical services that we do across the five localities to include the city of Charlottesville. With that, I just want to invite anyone who uh does want to reach out to MACA directly uh to please contact me. To thank the commission for their time and thorough review, as well as the staff and our community partners here. We look forward to your feedback and the opportunity, we hope, to partner in making a positive lasting impact. In the city of Charlottesville for those families who are the most vulnerable, who are experiencing financial hardships. And in order to build a bright, thriving and resilient community together. Thank you so much for your time.
So Ms. Parks, if there are no other folks who want to speak, um we can now invite um Ms. Johnson back in. If there are others that want to speak, then yeah, Ms. Johnson has has your hand raised. So Ms. Parks. Uh you can invite Ms. Johnson back in.
Hi, thank you. Um I just uh first, as my sister said, we're all for this type of project. At the opposite end of our street. And um I do applaud MACA this time for reaching out. To the community and to the city, which they didn't do last time. They surprised us with that last. Um proposal and the prior proposal. Probably and um anyway, I'm I'm I'm. I'm a little happier with this proposal. Of course, there's still some issues and the one thing being is the traffic issue. And I also wanted to point out, uh it seems to me they're redirecting that drive to a line with Davis. Because they want traffic to come up and down Davis Avenue. Well, it's not just Davis Avenue. The other way in and out there is going up. Uh Watson Avenue and the outlet to that is to go up the bypass ramp going to Logan. That's the other exit. So somewhat you all need to drive that and see how that is on a busy hour, okay? So um. You know, someone proposed at the meeting that maybe they put a strip so people going, tonight go in and out from Davis Avenue to the MACA site. So you have to go exit in or fight via Park Street. So um I do have a question about what MACA's footprint is gonna be on the property. Are they staying, they going, they owning, are they renting? Um they've been a good neighbor. Um. But I want to know how that affects the future of the commercial property they're gonna have there. Either they're gonna be renting it or owning it. So what is their footprint gonna be? And um I am concerned about that building that they're gonna be in, I think it's building two. That has a commercial aspect, which is right down, it looks like to us, on the bypass ramp. Um if they were to leave that spot, what happens to that spot? And will there be future entrances and exits as are concerned that somehow this whole block is is gonna become commercial? As people maybe are driven out by high traffic and so forth. Um. I think that's about it. I'll think of something else. I've got lists and lists of questions. I'll probably be writing to you guys. But thank you for listening to this. But again, I it's it's a much better proposal than the last one that they presented a couple of years ago. And um and please, that they they did their homework, but the the traffic is a huge, huge problem here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um are there any others, uh Ms. Parks?
Um not that I see.
Okay, so we're gonna close the public hearing. Um sunshine, I. Maybe the audience didn't quite understand the configuration of the partnership. So I think there may be value in you for quickly walking folks through uh who's gonna be there. And what the the mixed use, mixed configuration is going to be.
Sure, so the um the majority of the site will be residential. Uh as you enter along um the updated MACA drive, it would be sort of neighborhood scale residential, like you would see in any other part of the neighborhood. As you move to the back of the site, you would have the residential multifamily buildings. Currently in the plans is on the ground floor of one of those buildings. Uh would be a preschool center uh run by MACA. That's the promote proposed commercial use. The one I do want to highlight um that that the funding that we pull together, and by we, I mean People on Housing Alliance. And Habitat, the funding that we pull together only covers residential uses. So there is still work to be done on the funding stack that would support a new. Um uh communities, not community center, sorry, early learning center or childhood center. Uh to be run by MACA and whether they own that space or whether they lease that space is still to be determined. Um there are a number of financial um gyrations that we have to go through before we have clarity on that. Um I can't speak directly for where uh MACA's permanent offices will be. But it would, you know, assuming this project moves forward, their permanent offices will not be on this site. The only presence they would have is the preschool center and they would be moving their office function to a different location. And I know I've heard uh Sarah Hanks speak before, but that is a work in progress uh that she is working with her board on diligently currently.
Okay, thank you very much. So left, right. Um let's begin with questions and then we'll do inputs. So Ms. Russell, any questions?
I did have a question about the that the Davis Street concern that the 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 two um members of the public were. Voicing. Did I hear correctly that there would be no right turn onto Park Street out of? Um out of the development?
Uh there would be no left turn.
No left turn. Okay, so. Presumably, most people would choose to make a right turn if they were going into town as opposed to going across to Davis, I think.
I I think there has been a concern expressed that that by lining up that intersection, it makes it easier to cut through. And then I think there currently is a fairly robust uh traffic pattern that goes between Park Street and Locust through the neighborhood. Um I think given the the current situation between a at that intersection where they are misaligned. And the kind of conflict between the left turn coming out of Davis and the right turn coming out of MACA. That's a very, very awkward intersection. And so I think given the circumstances, the the the. The kind of scale of improvement that we can make is to in fact align it so that it becomes a more manageable and more. Uh more familiar kind of intersection. Um the intent is not to create a a through street through Davis. Is is in fact to make the the inner the the kind of interactions around that intersection more. More typical of any other four-way intersection.
So Ms. Russell, if you don't mind, um because it's a great, great question and hopefully um Mr. Duncan can help. Better answer that question. Mr. Duncan, what do you think of the new configuration that Ms. Russell's asking about?
So so they did this upon my request. Um this was a request that I made of the previous application as well. Um anytime that you have that kind of offset intersection, it does create kind of a conflict. You're, you know, when you're. When you have a traditional intersection, a traditional cross, um you kind of see the vehicle across from you. Um you know, you know, who's gotta go first, who's gonna, you know, whatever. Um when you have that offset, you're not necessarily the kind of. Off you to the periphery of your vision. Um so realigning is really more of a safety concern than it is anything else. Um for me, so that that was really my, you know, my reasoning for requesting that.
Okay, thanks. Um you aren't asking the same question about whether a PUD is appropriate. But um and I'm I'm just wondering, you know, it sounds like some of the ancillary or some of the. I suppose office uses might be leaving this site, so what why the, why the PUD? Request.
Kurt, you want to jump in on this?
Sure, the same logic in that we wanted to kind of be very transparent and kind of have a more developed plan as we presented it. Holds true, but also this site, it does have a mix of uses and it does cluster the homes in a way that provides for amenity. And preserves a lot of the kind of the the reasons that PUDs exist in the city, or at least some of the anticipated language. But uh more importantly, I think this one, if if it were to rezone to something F, something different, it would. It would be very spotty. Uh you know, PUD in itself is inherently, some could argue, spotty anyway. But it's so laden with process that, you know, the trade-offs are there, but there's nothing around this site that would lend itself to be. Another zone where on Park Street, there are some other zone, you know, that other zone is kind of close. You could. Maybe make a leap of faith, but in this case, it would, it'd be kind of on an island. So that's why I think we decided to go with PUD.
Okay.
So Ms. Russell, I just want to um ask you to have conversations with um Jody and Kurt. And Jen, those those, okay, that that's a great question. And I I'm not sure that we have much PUD expertise on our board. And when Jody rotates off, we have none, so please. Continue to ask these questions. Also, maybe have a conversation with Jody and Kurt and Jen about PUDs and why they're important. That was a great question.
Okay, thanks. That's all for me.
Uh Roy, I mean, Mrs. Solzemberg.
Um yeah, so I guess I'll ask the same question um I asked last time. Uh we have a nine point three acre site here. Um you're looking to build it at about ten units per acre, which is well within. Uh the low density designation in the currently adopted comp plan. Um there is a lot of uh just. Open surface parking in the site. Uh do you feel that you have maximized the use of this site? Um and that, you know, with this kind of rare, mostly greenfield opportunity. Um I I think there aren't too many more of these left in the city, uh relatively low hanging fruit, like are we missing out? Uh on potential for affordable housing by building it in this configuration um with this, this time with this. Like, are we missing out on potential for affordable housing by building it in this configuration with this, this time with this proposal?
So again, a complex answer. I, I will say that. The first versions of our sketches around the site plan. Included, I think we at one point were exploring something of probably closer to 20 or 30 more units initially. To see what we could fit with some of the same core principles underlying your question. As we got into the fine mesh of balancing open space, preserving some of the existing cultural infrastructure. The, and then frankly, parking. That this, this is where we landed. We ended up having to trim back the number of homes. Unlike. I mean, this is, this is a site where it really does have to manage all of its parking load on the interior since there is no neighborhood parking anywhere nearby. It's also a family site where you're talking about some homeownership and some rental. The homeownership parking, that was, we had a very, you know, lengthy discussions around what Habitat buyers typically expect and need. And when you include those and then you look at the requirements, we expect that our residents, when you need to have visitors also parking on site. But not having anywhere nearby they can park on the street. This is the, the tightest we felt comfortable making it as far as a parking ratio. And as we looked at, we did look at adding 10 more units here, 20 more units there. And then the parking started to, it never worked. Either it. Hit critical slopes, it pushed the buildings in, in ways that didn't, didn't function properly. And we are also doing our best, it's not a perfect site plan, but it's, we did our best to distribute and scatter the parking kind of around the buildings as opposed to one large thing in the middle. It, again, it's not perfect, but it's, it does tight and, and close as we could make it. The other layer to the, the response is that we intentionally made the decision at the outset to include some homeownership. And recognizing that it's not just units that matter, it's the range of housing type, affordable housing typologies that matter. And when you blend those two together, this is the site that emerges.
All right. My other question, can you tell me a little bit about this? I think you're calling it a historic driveway loop that you're kind of protecting right as the sort of centerpiece of this site. You know, I haven't been up to the site yet, but when I look at it in Google Maps, it looks like a little bit of mostly broken asphalt. That doesn't actually close the loop. What's going on there? Is that designated by the D A R is have to be protected?
Um, I think I'll, I'll jump in here. I think when you go out to the site, the, the broken asphalt isn't the, isn't the nicest portion of all that. The stone walls that, that parallel those paths are, are actually, I think, the historic. Resource or cultural resource that's there. It's also a reminder of the, of the pattern that, that existed along the old historic. Two fifty when it was a two lane, two lane highway. And I think we also probably. Gave it a fairly important component in our planning because I think in the previous application, one of the, one of the, one of the. Part, parts of the discussion were that that previous application did not preserve it, that, that actually. Eliminated a, a good, a good portion of that. And so. I think our, our thought was that, that given the, given the idea of trying to develop a community in there. To have that kind of asset and that kind of linkage to a, to what was a, a, a historic landscape. When you walk through it, I mean, it's full of, full of thorns and, and, and underbrush now. But when you pull that stuff away, it actually is quite an extraordinary landscape in there. And, and so we felt like it was important enough to become the kind of edge of this property towards the bypass. And that we would keep our planning kind of on either side of it. So.
It's Rock Hill, right?
It was Rock Hill Academy, but before that it was an estate. And then the, and the original home is gone.
And there was a section 106 review done of this area with the construction of the bypass. And I found a link to that talking all about the historic landscape. I'll put it in the chat.
Yeah. And I think the other, the other, well, I, I, I was thinking there's an irony in terms of what the, 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 one of the schools that was. The way one of the schools that actually occupied this property. Was one of the schools that was, was developed when, when integration was ordered for the, for the public schools. And to now have that property kind of reclaimed, I think is a kind of. Pretty nice historic justice. And to remember that, I think is very important. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Kind of.
Maybe if I could ask a quick follow-up, is, is the quality of it? You know, the, the path leading up from the bypass and the gardens in the corner? And is the loop in the very center in the park that isn't critical slopes, kind of between the two buildings, is that of that same caliber? Or is that just kind of getting lumped in here?
No, it's all part of the same system.
Okay.
It, it kind of has the potential to be an outdoor room. If you can imagine that kind of bridges and it's a little bit of a contrast to some of the more open gardens. So. My dog's barking, so he, he doesn't agree with this opinion of what we should do. Just kidding. I don't know what I'm going to do, but anyway. It has potential, but it's going to take a little work to be a different. I think the other thing that we were trying to do is set up a series of different kinds of experiences that people might be able to enjoy as they pass through the neighborhood. Macca Drive is going to be different from the community green, which is different from this space in the loop, which is different from the gardens. Which ultimately leads down to John Warner Parkway. And so anybody, as we invite them to travel through either pedestrian or bike, would actually be able to experience different. Outdoor spaces that will have different purposes and kind of makes it a little more robust is the idea.
So out of respect for our staff time, because they've been at work since night eight thirty today, let's move on to the next question. So Mr. Soliets.
Thank you. That historic perspective was extremely helpful. I, I knew some of that, but not all of it. Have a sort of a design question and bike question. A design question, you know, I've, I've admired that drive many times. I'm a regular on that, the, the greenway there. The. It could have been possible to sort of use that as like a, like a regulating line in the design to make that sort of. An area that the buildings kind of form around. But that's not really the case right now. Everything sort of like cuts into it. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Um, I'm not exactly sure I understand the question. Could you kind of restate what we're, what we're trying to address?
So PUDs are weird. Part of them are, is, is about aesthetics and innovation and design. So one story that I could see, when, that just has, has occurred to me looking at the site. Is that that is an interesting sort of vista. So it's something that you could organize buildings around. Right now, as I can, as far as I can tell, there's no relationship between the buildings and that line. It's just sort of floating. Is that intentional? What, what was your, what was your thinking there?
The, the line of the, of the old stone walls?
The same.
I think, well, what we, what, what we, the way we laid the larger, the multifamily buildings around, we sort of laid the, the. We placed the multifamily buildings on either side of what was historically a, a carriage drop-off area. Think we imagined taking up the asphalt out of that area and making it a green space. So that it becomes this garden between those two buildings. And, and so that's the, that's the kind of relationship between those, those, those historic. Walls and the, and the new buildings. And then that, that drop-off area is actually centered on the, on the kind of village green that's, that's up further along. So that's as much of a relationship as we had. We, there were a number of different layouts that we did. And this was the, this was, this kind of framing on either side of that space, we thought was a fairly effective way to. Integrate it into the, into the kind of daily life of the community there.
Let me add one line to that, which is one of the organizing principles of the layout two is actually the entry along Macca Drive. That right now, if you're driving in, you see building and trees. In a way that obscures the long range view of the Blue Ridge Mountains. And so as you're driving in, the buildings are, the multifamily buildings are set. Slightly to the south, you have that view. And then the multi, one of the multifamily buildings in particular has stunning views off the backside. You know, out beyond that. So in some ways that was the more driving organizing principle of how the site got laid out rather than the, the walks themselves.
Makes a lot of sense to me. Bicycles, this is the, the, the best greenway resource we've got in the region, which is sort of unfortunate. And you're right up on it. Right now you're doing sort of a conventional parking strategy. Makes sense. It's what, it's what we require. But you're right there. You're, you're right on that incredible bicycle resource. Is there a way to, to, to better leverage that to better tell that story and maybe do some mode shift?
You want to, you want to jump in, Kurt?
Yeah, I, I think Lyle's right. I mean, I think the, the trouble we're having is a little bit of just the technical aspect of being able to connect down at the western end of the site. To kind of get through that existing stone wall that was built as part of the bypass. So there's some logistics that we're going to have to work out and in terms of engineering to make that feasible for back access. I think the easiest back access right now will be down the old driveway. But we've been told that that, that's the part of the off-ramp that everybody wants to avoid is the skinny part. So, yeah, but it's definitely on our mind and Jonathan and his gang have been looking at how we can try to make a logical connection. What's a little bit hard to tell from some of these diagrams is that the lower part of building two and the, the T shape on building one. Has that basement level. So there's almost four stories facing two fifty. And that bottom level is the one that we anticipate animating with some of the. Community spaces and the amenity spaces that will essentially open out onto the gardens. And would be a perfect place to have bicycle infrastructure of the kind that I imagine you have in mind. Because of that split level, we have some spaces that are going to be both in the footprint of the building and along its edges that. Will make that access easy for support.
It's definitely something we're looking into there. We're still very initial and even the, the P U D planning items on this, we haven't gotten. We've gotten into some initial gradings and things, but we are looking at ways to connect from, basically you come off Park Street through the site. And have some sort of bike or potentially a shared use path and that would get you down there and then, because that is kind of like that path ends there. And there's just a narrow sidewalk along the on-ramp. So I think it's a great opportunity there to get the grades to work.
Thank you. That's what I have.
Okay, so I believe Jody had to join another Zoom call. But he wanted to pass along to you guys that. His comments are no different from the comments he made, but when we met with you, Sun-Ti, he is plus by this and ready to go. Wants to see some things filled out that he suggested when we met, but those things need to be filled out. The only question I've got is for Mr. Duncan. And the question I got for Mr. Duncan, or if he's not available, Ms. Creasy and others. Is. What was that?
Sorry about that. That's my dog this time. Comes with animals.
Okay, the question I got for the engineers is, there's only one place to enter and exit. And so with increased density, is there a requirement that we have more than one place to come in and come out of this property?
So in this particular instance, I, I don't see how that's possible. Just, there's limited access to, to two fifty. So we can't access through the. You know, really that whole side of the property and the rest of the front edge of this property is bordered by, you know, single-family residences. So what they have is kind of what, what they have. Ideally, yes, I, you know, I prefer to have another access point for a development of this size. But realistically, I just, I don't see how, how that would be able to, to work in this situation.
And the only other question I got, just something for the applicant to think about is. What's going to be the reaction from the public safety officials? When there's only one way to get in and out, the fire chief and et cetera, et cetera. Something to think about. The. Just. The telephone pole that's right there. We're moving, are we, we're moving away from the telephone pole, moving closer to the telephone pole. Do we have to worry about that? Is that a problem? Do we take, take that out?
We're moving, we're realigning the entrance towards the telephone pole, so that would have to be relocated. So that's an item. We've talked about and would have to be coordinated at site plan. So probably wouldn't be removed. It would just be realigned along the other poles.
Yeah, so something to think about and something to suggest. Okay, cool. So left to right, any input, any guidance, Ms. Russell, any guidance for these, these guys?
Um, I don't have any guidance. I would just say I really support the concept and thoughtfulness of this project. I'm really happy to see that affordable housing can be well-designed and be beautiful, connected to the landscape and thoughtful within the historic context of the site. So. I'd love to also see those historic features if we could get site visit. That's all.
Mrs. Solzemberg.
Yeah, echo that. It's good to see this project, again, badly needed affordable housing. And I mean, Macca serves such an important purpose. You know, econ, there's Professor Peckman who says, who shows that early childhood education is possibly the most valuable investment we can possibly make. So anything we can do to keep furthering that mission is super important. In terms of this plan, I mean, again, like I said last time, I'd like to see more if at all possible. If, if we can't increase the footprint here, consider overhanging more buildings over this, this surface parking area. I think in this case. Some of those townhomes could potentially be stacked townhomes, which I know is a kind of a new housing format that Dan talks about a lot. That's flying off the shelves in the private market, especially with the gray change of the surrounding properties. I think there's a possibly a good opportunity for it. I, I think the parking near the townhomes and duplexes. Is a little bit strange and maybe almost like institutional in that it's, it's like a parking lot. Whereas, you know, given that these are single-family homes, you know, I wonder if a driveway where you fit in two spaces just by tandem parking, because it's within the same family. Makes more sense and then potentially could fit more parking spaces outside of that, that can be more effectively kind of flexible. So if one family only has one car, but they have two spaces here, that other space is never going to be used. And if we can, you know, make it more flexible and so it's implicitly reallocated, I think that's going to work better. Honestly, I think this is over parks. You're like over one and a half parking spaces per unit. It's a lot of parking, especially for one that's even closer to downtown. And that you can very viably get downtown without a car and, and can very viably be a one-car household at most. To that point, I think you absolutely a hundred percent need to get that southwestern bicycle and pedestrian connection punched through that stone wall. You know, the bicycle amenities going down Park Street, even though they unfortunately end at the county office building are the best in the city. And even going north are also great, especially for recreational, eventually to get to Route 29. The alternative is Sharrow's on Park Street. If you go to the east, absolutely need to be going down McIntyre there. So, so you a hundred percent need that connection. Lastly, I think a playground is something you're going to have to show in your final plans. I would assume Macca needs one. They have one now. I don't know if you are already thinking about that. It seems like you are. That central green space there in the middle of the parking lot, I'd like to see that programmed in a way that makes it an inviting place to use. That isn't just green space in the middle of the parking lot. I mean, unless you're planning on using it as stormwater infrastructure. But I mean, again, a, a good plan, it's good to see affordable housing. Oh, and then I forgot to ask a question about the funding gap and whether you're expecting funding from the city for this stuff, for this and the other one. But Kurt will come up later in C I P season.
No, let's get an answer. What, what are you, yeah, funding?
So. The short answer is yes, 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 yes. Fundamentally, building of, for affordable housing these days requires some level. Fundamentally, building of, for affordable housing these days requires some level of support locally. The cost of construction is so, so damn high. And, and justifiably, Maccah is looking at recouping the value of their site, their land to be able to support their programs. And so, you know, we have the land cost in an expensive part of the city that we also have to account for as well. So there is, that there is going to absolutely be a need for support in one way or another.
And I mean, again, in that case, especially if you're able to squeeze more units in there, I would maybe encourage you to phase it into two separate parts to get even more of that Lytech funding. If you're going over the limit of what we're allocated in our full bet allocation plan. But those are my thoughts. Thanks.
So the critical slope looks like, again, Shink's branch may be impacted by this. It's important to me. And I'll bug the heck out of you guys about this, that you guys put together a good plan to protect it when you disturb the critical slopes. So please work with our engineers to make sure that you're doing a good job of doing that. And you clearly articulate your, um, your plan to do that. But I am pretty geeked about this. As I mentioned to you, sunshine, uh, when we met last week. I was the chair of the Maccah Board a few years back when we began thinking about this process. And I thought, one, we're in the wrong location. We need to move into someplace like Friendship Court to provide our services there, sell that land and live off the annuity that that would, 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 would present us. So I'm geeked about getting out of there and putting up the affordable housing that you guys are doing. Love the idea of you partnering with Habitat and doing affordable, affordable housing with Habitat, because their plan is to build wealth. And so it does all kinds of great things. I like what you're doing. Just make certain that you're protecting the slopes. And make sure that you work with Duncan to work through the totality of what you guys are thinking about building with Park Street Church and with, with Maccah as opposed to the impact and traffic. With that, I'll open it up to other commissioner comments. Mr. Soliets, you're, you need to unmute.
I just wanted to say something. Um, the, so a, a lot of what I've had to say has been said. Just one thing I'd like to urge you to consider is unbundling. Instead of giving every unit the same fixed amount of parking regardless of need, to offer it as a separate service. It's a hassle, but at the, at the, the scale that you're working on, it may make operational sense. And when people have to choose space to store vehicles, they often choose less, significantly less. They, they have to make the decision. Once that space is no longer used for storage of vehicles, it become available for many other things, for example, affordable housing or trees. A consideration. That's what I have. Thank you.
Oh yeah. One other minor thing I forgot, or if you're going to say something, sunshine, go ahead.
I, I was just going to briefly respond that under Lytech, that's extraordinarily difficult to do. It's in the market rate sector. It's, it's a not, not common, but ea- easy thing to do. Under Lytech, we have to provide the same amenities to everybody.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, in, in your P I, in your P U D use matrices, I think you're going a little bit too hard in removing things and, and making some changes that are just kind of noise. If something's an S U P, it doesn't make sense to make it like add more yellow for us to pay attention to when it's going to require a special use permit anyway. And you're removing things like amateur radio antennas up to 75 feet and like family day homes that are required to be by right by state law, as far as I'm aware. So if you could just tone that down to what's actually being removed practically, I think that makes more.
So to the applicant, any questions for us that we haven't answered? And then there are a couple of technical questions that I think Stat's going to have to answer, but anything that we can help with?
Kurt, you happy with what we got?
Yeah, I think this has been super helpful. I'm just flipping over to that part of the booklet that tells me what our questions might have been, but I think I just closed it out. Here we go. I'm sorry. I looked at the wrong thing. I'm having trouble finding which, oh, there it is. Sorry. Uh, yeah, we talked about the loop, public street connection, sideline. Yeah, I think all of these are things that we can talk to the staff with. I think this is, we've covered all that ground. So I think we're in good shape on the questions that we had. Thank you. Or we'll ask staff more directly, the technical issues.
So Ms. Creasy, anything else? Actually, Fox records on as well. I think there were some questions with, I thought there were questions with Walker. Any questions for Ms. Creasy or Chris? Any comments? We're, we're good?
I think one of the key connections we'll make is with Chris Gensic about the trails and those connections as well. Yeah.
Okay, I mean, important. Ms. Creasy, we, we.
I believe so. I do want to thank our staff folks for, for attending and listening to the discussion and providing comments where requested. And I know that they'll have more opportunities to, to weigh in on this as, as things go forward.
Well, with that, I think we're wrapped. Thank you, guys.
Everyone.